Welcome to the March third meeting of the town's standard planning board. Meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session. You have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify me if you are unable to hear or see the materials. The board works from a prepared agenda and this evening we have approval of the minutes for January and February. We have two finding of facts, one for Woods Excavating and one for William and Lisa Rizberra. There are no old business items and we have three new business items and no miscellaneous hearings. The applicant has the burden to prove to the board that their application is complete and meets all applicable town standards. Any person wishing to address the board may do so in accordance with the following procedures. Please utilize the podium or one of the provided microphones. The board will open the public hearing for the applicant to present their project. The town planner will provide his assessment of the project and hear responses from the applicant. Board members will then ask questions and hear responses. The hearing will then be open to the public for comment and the applicant can respond to those comments. The board may receive any oral or documentary evidence, but such evidence is restricted to the subject matter of the agenda item. The board shall exclude irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious evidence. Citizens shall refrain from interrupting other speakers. The meeting is being taped, recorded. It's very difficult to hear what is being said when multiple people speak at the same time. Citizens shall avoid person attacks and conduct themselves in a civil courteous manner as expected by all participants. All questions should be addressed through the chair. Speakers shall not attempt to engage in debate with other meeting participants. Upon hearing from the public, the hearing will be closed for the application and the board will deliberate and vote on the application. Following the decision on the application either towards the end of the meeting or at the board's next regular meeting, the board will prepare written finding of facts and approve them for the records. All right, we have a quorum this evening. Everyone is here with the exception of Frank Nappi, so we have a quorum of six. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for January and February of 2025.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented to the board.
A move to accept the minutes as presented, is there a second?
Second.
And moved and seconded. Accept the minutes as presented. Any further discussion by the board? Being none, all those in favor? Opposed?
No, abstain, I wasn't here.
Abstain. All right. Next item on the agenda is the finding of facts. First one is Woods Aggregate LLC. This is for the extension, I believe, of their blasting permit. Is this the one for the expansion of the pit?
Blasting.
Blasting.
Blasting. Wish of the board?
Take them individually, please.
Pardon me?
Are we doing these individually?
Yeah, finding of facts.
We can do them individually or together?
I'd appreciate if we did it individually, please.
Okay. We'll do Woods Excavation first. This was for the annual renewal so they continued to blast in the pit area.
I make a motion to, in a sense, move the finding of fact forward on the, in a sense, Woods Aggregates.
I'll second that. Any further discussion by the board? Being none, all those in favor? Opposed?
One abstained.
All right. Our second one is for William and Lisa Rizberra. This is for a shore land zone. Tear down and rebuild. Seem like it agreed with the minutes.
Yep, his is that I'll make a motion to move the finding of fact forward as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded to prove the finding of facts. Discussion by the board? Carolyn?
With, with this particular one, I do feel like when you rebuild or regen- have new construction on a lot. I'm all in favor of having a really nice building for the site, but I don't, I think that this structure is much too large and, you know, I, I look at this bullet where it says the CEO will approve a replanting plan for significant trees removed. I don't think there's, if any, recounted, there's gonna be like at least 21 trees coming down and I don't think there's any room to replant those. And I think we're setting the CEO up in this case to not be able to even have a sufficient replanting plan. And I, I'm actually astounded that this was approved. So I won't be supporting this.
Replanting plan has already been submitted and approved by the CEO.
Sure.
A project has already received its DEP permitting and is underway.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four. Two opposed. One and one abstained. Or one and one. All right, thank you. Next item of business is new business, Guy Tinkerham. Okay. 468 Osby Trail West, map 27 lot 15, site plan for home occupation. Enlightenment Martial Arts Academy. And we happen to butter on the board, I guess it's gonna sit.
Next one.
Next one?
Next one.
All right.
Not this one.
Not this one, the next one, okay, got the wrong one, very good. Sorry about that. And is there a representative here to present the case?
Sure, what I'm?
Well, if you can just walk us through what you plan on doing over there and how you plan on modifying the lot or building and basically outline what you have in your application.
Okay. The way I outline it is I don't really need to make any modifications. I do plan on putting in for a permit to extend the garage in which I'm working out of. But other than that, the lot is big enough and sufficient to hold as it is for up and go. I have been using it as a club for almost seven, eight months now and I've been just getting different people traffic that's not kind of like in my comfortability range along with like liability reasons. So I kinda wanted to make it a business to separate it from my home and get insurances in place. And that was the whole reason why I wanted to put it through. Pretty much it.
The parking on site, well, excuse me, stop. Keep myself out of sequence here. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward and it's a, home occupation is allowed under the ordinance. To me, like there's enough space on the law to the board to make sure it meets the criteria, but I personally, from my perspective, I don't see any particular issues with this application.
The only thing I saw was the parking on the site. Parking requirement is nine by 18, 162 square feet for parking stall. What's proposed is less than that. We know what the magic number is and what they have to provide us with.
The exact number would depend on, exactly on class size, I believe. Don't have a strict one for home occupations. It's gonna be, call it a s- closest use is gonna be a school, I think. Should be one. You know, I mean, if we look at it like a school, it's one per three seats in the largest assembly room. Which again, I don't know if that really applies in this circumstance or two per classroom. A private club or lodge would be one per four members. Probably more adequate, but I think the, if we have, do you have an expected class size that you'd be looking at?
As of right now, I have like 12, 13 members. Once I expand, I can hold more. And right now we have a ton of room for cars. And I know the biggest issue was street parking. I wouldn't make any of my members park on that road because it's a very busy road and it's dangerous, but we have plenty of parking to not have to use the side of the road.
You have enough room to make those parking spaces 18 feet deep rather than 15 and 12.
18 feet deep?
Yeah, a normal, normal stall is nine feet wide by 18 feet deep. So by your shed, as you have on your sketch here, you show 15 feet. So you'd need an additional three feet in depth there.
That was the garage side? I could move the garage back.
The houses, I guess, on the left side.
It's possible to move the garage back.
You're showing the parking beside, oh yeah, in front of the shed.
He's looking at when you pull in the depth, so it's not the side to side, but the.
All the depth from the road to.
From the driveway to the back of the stall.
Making sure that there's depth for like a large pickup truck or something can fit all the way without.
In the driveway.
Yeah, he's looking at this, sorry. You know, the picture, like so you gave us pictures in this. That's what I think he's talking about is the depth by the shed as well as the other side where it's only 12.
And width wise, it seems like you have enough there to meet the one per four or the, certainly two per class or one per three. Any of those, you can meet them yet, it's just the sizes. On your right hand side of the driveway going in there, how far is it to your property line?
I'm pulling in on the right side.
Yeah, you showed three parking areas there, D, B, C, and D.
Think at the end where the tree line is, I have 10, 10 feet.
Between the end of the parking areas or from the driveway? Cause he said you, like he said it was 12 feet deep.
Yeah, I think from the.
Do you have your pitches?
Sorry?
Do you have your pitches with you?
Guy, you need this?
Yeah.
You can borrow mine, my memory's weird.
I got you.
That's all, thanks Carolyn, yeah. Oh, you didn't know there was gonna be a quiz, Guy, sorry.
I was actually really nervous, I'm not, I mean, I don't know if you could tell, but I'm very, very nervous.
Oh, don't be nervous.
I didn't know what to expect and I've been already through, like, this month has been. I lost my three year old and this month was his birthday, so I'm trying my best.
Don't worry, Guy, we'll get you through this.
This is nothing, just questions.
So the way I measured this was from the start of the driveway pavement back to the tree line.
All right.
So.
Snow piles are.
Uh, it goes a little bit past the snow piles, I just couldn't measure it because of the snow. So it does go back a little further. I didn't know if you guys needed exact measurements or not, but I can re-measure when the snow melts, if that's an issue.
You happen to know, Guy, how wide your driveway is, that this, you know, dimension in between the two parking areas?
I don't, I didn't measure it.
It's okay, no.
I mean.
Sorry, there's not, sorry, there's not a uniform.
He needs one space for every four members. If he could provide us with a plan as a condition of approval, it shows he's got at least three nine by 18 stalls. He'd meet the criteria and he can have as many 15 compact car stalls as he wants, I think. And that would meet the ordinance, board members think that that's.
Yeah.
I mean, you must have spots out there, like maybe to the left of the garage, on the left side that you can get an 18 footer in there. Is dead, I guess, is what it is on a garage.
Yeah.
And then on the other side, if you've got room in between some of those trees to get file on amended plan, show us how that sets in there. You get three nine by 18s. Leave the rest in there and I think that would meet the criteria. We'd either have to make that a condition of approval or grant him a waiver or something. Now, those, those parking areas, I assume since all your pollen are already made, that they exist?
Yes.
No more impervious surface, I guess is where I was going.
And the septic is in the back?
Yes.
The septic, has the code enforcement officer looked at the septic relative to this additional use?
Uh, we've not talked about it with him at this time, no.
You gonna have bathroom facilities in the gym?
Not in the gym.
In the house.
This is a, gonna be a pretty low septic use.
I know.
Like I think I said in the memo, if you wanted to put a condition in there to confirm, just to make sure that the septic area isn't undersized for the.
Where I was coming from.
It's sized appropriately for a single family house, it should be sufficient for this use. But we don't know what's in the ground there necessarily.
The board members? The only two items I had. Carol?
I was just concerned a little bit about the parking as well. And I didn't know if you would have like back to back classes where you'd have some people parked there, other people coming in to park, people leaving. Uh, would there be like a, any kind of break, maybe a half an hour, 15 minutes or something just to help with a traffic flow?
Yes. Yeah, we, we do that, we space our classes out like that so that way it's, that doesn't happen. But where we're at for members, it's not an issue right now. It might be when we expand, but right now it's not.
Right, so when we, when we approve this, it is kind of for the expansion, right? As you build out your gym?
Yes, yeah.
So that's just a concern that I have, or, uh, cause we don't want people on the main road or backing out into the main road.
Yes. I agree.
Right.
Dangerous.
We hope you have to expand so much, Guy, you have to go find a bigger building and have more success.
That's, that's the plan. I would just, I didn't know, to be honest with you, when I, when I, when I started it, it was just therapy. And then people just kept getting interested and interested and then, you know, I was like, okay, well, I'll try to open it to, to everybody, make it a business, cause liability. I honestly never thought it was gonna be this popular.
I mean, it's a good thing, yeah.
It is, and a good friend of mine said to, to stay on my property as long as I can and then move when I absolutely have to. So I'm trying to take his advice.
Oh, Charlie, would you be comfortable with that, uh, go and confirm that there are in fact a condition that says we confirm that at least three of these spots are deep enough for a.
Yeah, I wrote this up and said the applicant shall provide town planner with an updated site plan showing a minimum of three nine by 18 private stall, uh, parking stalls to meet requirements of one parking space per four members for a private class.
Sounds good to me.
What's the largest class you could have in that space? You're, you're a new and improved space.
Oh. 18, 20? Maybe?
So I think that has to dictate some of the parking. Right?
If it's 20, it would be five spaces then.
Well, you don't have to, sorry, we don't have the measurements on one side, but you know, if he has three spaces on one side, how much can he, you know, we don't have the exact measurements on BD and C, you know, sorry, CD.
Yeah, it seems like there's. Yeah, it seems like there's room, as you look at the photos, to squeeze maybe an, an eighteen and maybe a fifteen or whatever. Just a matter of getting your tape out and doing an amended plan, so.
When there's not snow back.
You wanna do it for five instead of three, I think you can probably squeeze those in there.
Probably, because he's got twenty feet, sorry, based on the drawing from the, on the shed side, he's got twenty feet before the parking things, that he does have more space. It is Ospey Trail West, so, you know, but yeah, I think he's got the space, if he just amended, he'd be able to do it.
I'm not sure how we want to read the, what would you have suggested? Septic system?
I guess not, yeah, maybe I didn't have the language in there in the end, um, but I think we can just say that.
Code enforcement officer to confirm it?
Confirm that existing septic is.
Yeah, to have the code enforcement officer confirm the sizing of the septic system. We would add those as conditions two and three.
Yep.
Right, the members of the board?
I, I just want to say, um, the deed shows a hundred feet of frontage, so I, I agree that he's be able to fit those parking, yeah.
Yeah, I read that as well. Alright, first item we'd have to consider is a. Prove a waiver relative to two foot contours, he's not provide, he's not proposing any exterior changes, I understand it. No, no regrading taking place.
I'll make a motion to move the waive the submission requirement one eighty-one seventy-one, one D for the two foot contours.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant the waiver. For subsection one eighty-one seventy-one, one D, two foot contours, any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, unanimous? And then, do we have enough information here to keep this application complete?
With the conditions you've added, Charlie.
Okay, got a motion?
I make a motion.
And the application for four sixty-eight Ospey Trail West to be complete as presented with the additional. Conditions.
Second.
Seconded.
I don't know if Jackie needed a wording from you, but.
Or the discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, unanimous? And then the last item we would have to do, yes, we do. Alright, so anybody from the public that would like to speak relative to this item?
Guy, this is your time, when you sit down and you let anyone else speak.
Do you want this back?
No, you can keep it, don't worry, Carolyn, Carolyn bailed me out.
Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public.
Second, moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Proportion is closed. Now we can move on to approval. And the recommended motion would be to move that the board grant approval under the provisions of the Standish Land Use Code. For the home occupation application submitted by Young Ingham. For the property at four sixty-eight Ospey Trail West in Standish, having found it to meet site plan review criteria of subsection. One eighty-one seventy-three, the performance standards of subsection one eighty-one thirty-five, and all the relevant standards of the zoning ordinance with the following conditions. One, the approval is dependent upon limited to the proposals and plans contained in the application and supporting documents. Submitted and affirmed by the applicant or, or the applicant's agent, either orally or in writing. And any variation from the plan's proposals, supporting documents are subject to review and approval by the planning board, except for minor changes. Which the code enforcement officer may make. Two, the applicant to provide the town planner with an updated site plan showing a minimum of five nine by eighteen. Parking stalls to meet the requirements of one parking space for four members of the private class. And three applicant to have the seat, code enforcement officer confirm the sizing of the septic system. Did I miss anything?
Just a question, I, I don't know if I heard it right, so there's gonna be five, um, twelve, I mean eighteen length?
Eighteen, yeah.
Nine by eighteen, and then how many, uh, is there a number for the other parking?
The, the minimum required, so as long as I've got that, we should be.
Yeah, as long as he meets the minimum.
I'm just asking.
Eight by sixteen is typically the size that is used for design purposes for the, uh, compact cars, but ring a bell with you, Pat?
Yeah, uh, fifteen, it's compact.
He's pretty close on those.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Especially on the left side in front of the garage.
Yeah.
And most people do have compact cars, there's a few of us wild guys with pickup trucks.
It's one or the other, it seems, yeah.
Okay, very good. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous.
See, Guy, no blood withdrawn.
Can you just work out that other plan that Scott? Item number two. This is Richard Randall doing businesses at Randall Orchards, fifteen Randall Road, map ten, lot ninety-three. Site plan amendment to the, to add a twenty by forty addition to the existing farm stand.
And chairman.
It's twenty, oop, it's twenty by sixty.
Myself as in the butter.
Okay, thank you.
She's in the butter.
It's twenty by sixty.
What did I say?
Forty.
Yeah, sorry, the, the.
Alright, no, it's no big.
That's good.
So the agenda's, sorry, the agenda has one number and the, the documents have sixty.
Yeah. Okay, you want sixty?
You want sixty?
Yeah.
Sixty.
Yeah.
Alright. Very good, walk us through what you want to do and.
Well, we're gonna add, uh, one a little bit more for retail, we wanna add a pizza oven, and we wanna bring the existing donut shack over. So we're looking at about twenty, twenty by twenty for retail, twenty by twenty for the pizza oven, and twenty by twenty for the donut shack. And all be in one place, it's gonna add right on to the existing unit that's there.
That is the side that.
So basically, the only thing that's different is we're gonna have brick oven pizza, the donut shack we already have.
That's as you go in the building on the left, the old building?
Yeah, the old one, that'll just be a storage shed afterwards, we're gonna move out of that and build a new building for it.
There's proposed septic on the site plan you turned in, that's existing though.
There's existing septic.
Is it gonna be adequate for the additional use?
Yeah, because it's all takeout. There's no, it's all takeout, so I have porta potties there, there's no, there'll be no more people working, might be a couple more people working. It's adequate for what we're gonna have for people working there.
For those folks who are familiar with it, but just to help you out, you've got the existing twenty-eight by thirty-six building right at the corner. This is going to be twenty feet by sixty feet, going away from Randall Road, parallel with twenty-five. Alright. We have some sketches in the package. Alright. Additional stuff you want to add, Scott?
No, adds an amendment to an already approved site plan, this was originally approved by the board in twenty nineteen, I think it's, uh, pretty straightforward. Most of this stuff was answered at that time, and it's just expanding the building, I think it's within the use as approved at that time, and just, uh, move through.
Yeah. I guess the only question I did have, and, and you may have an answer for this right off the bat, is on the. On this, the two kitchen areas, the pizza area and the donut area, grease traps, oil water separator type stuff to.
Well, if we have to put them in, we will.
External.
Because we don't have anything like that there right now. Well, I do have a grease, over at the donut shack, we have a grease trap outside, and then we pump it to the, the liquid to the septic tank, we separate it.
That's something the CEO verifies and checks out?
Yeah, that would be in building permit territory.
We did put one in for that donut shack.
Good idea, save the septic.
It is, yeah, real good idea.
There's no questions, Scott, from about the fire, the, the fire safety, things like that with the expansion, right?
It'll have to meet building code, and I know, I think, uh, you or your representative was in talking to the code officer today about the pizza oven and what. Protection that, that it needs, so they're, they're working on that with him.
Right.
Let me, it's gotta be sprinkled or?
No, just because there's no one going in. Said we might have to add some hoods or something like that, but we shouldn't have to have sprinklers, because no one's gonna be inside eating.
Jay Pete said today, you don't have to have a hood.
Right. There's no seating inside, it's just takeout.
We don't need to make it a condition of approval, that's, CEO checked that out, he's gonna do it anyways.
Working on that, yeah, so that's part of the building permits, so occupancy permits, all of that will be done through there.
All fairly flat gravel area, if I remember right.
Yeah, it is, it's all flat.
By numerous trips to get apples and stuff.
Good, yeah.
Anybody else from the board see anything, comments?
So, yeah, so it's, uh, served via a well, uh, currently for water?
Yes.
Um, is that, is there any, like, testing requirements?
Yes, I have to have it tested.
Because it's served to the public?
Yeah, I have to have it tested every year.
Yeah, that was my only comment, I wrote down that in the grease trap, so.
Yeah, it gets, um, tested just for the farm stand always, so. It's a state requirement.
And, um, the architectural design will kind of fit in or match in with the existing building?
Yep, yep, it will.
We've got a request, let's just go down through, see what we'd have to do here. First item would be to determine if we want to, uh, waive the submission for a requirement for the two foot contours on this site.
I'll make a motion to move the waive the submission requirements on the two foot contours.
A second from you, Deb?
Yeah.
Second from Deb. Okay, further discussion by the board? All those in favor? Unanimous? And then, is there a motion to find the application for fifteen Randall Road, map ten, lot ninety-three to be complete as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded to find the application complete as presented. Further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very good. Alright, I will open it up to the public, anyone from the public like to speak on this?
Thank you.
Project?
I love the donuts, so.
Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that. Further discussion by the board?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, alright. And then, the motion, as recommended by staff, is move that the board grant approval under provisions of the Standish Land Use Code. For the site plan application submitted by Robert Randall for the property at fifteen Randall Road in Standish, app ten, lot ninety-three. Having found it to meet the site plan review criteria, subsection one eighty-one seventy-three, and subsection one eighty-one seven point one. And all of the re- relevant standards of the zoning ordinance to the greatest extent practical, with the following conditions. And there are two of them, one is the approval is dependent upon limited to the proposals and plans, uh, contained in the application supporting documents submitted. And affirmed by the applicant or the applicant's agent, either orally or in writing. And, uh, any variation from the plans, proposals, and supporting documents are subject to review and approval by the planning board. Except for minor changes which the code enforcement officer may approve. And two, any new exterior lighting must be in compliant with subsection one eighty-one eighteen.
I make that motion.
I'm sorry, I, I just have one quick question, so, so this, what, what, what is the proposed septic? On the plan, and where did, where does the water go for them washing pizza pans and stuff?
Do you mind stepping to the?
Alright, Mr. Randall, you have to go back to the mic, so they can hear you in the, you can hear you in, so they can hear you on Spear Road.
No, that's, um, that probably was a layover from the last plan I did, so that's why it says proposed, but it's been there since I put the farm stand, it's very new.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
It's twenty nineteen, right? That's, yeah.
Sorry.
No?
Carry on.
Good comment? So it's been moved and seconded?
It's been moved but not seconded.
I'll second, I'll second.
Deb's seconding it. Alright, further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, very good. You're all set?
Go to the big bag.
Item number three, the Farmhouse LLC, Richfield Road, map sixteen, lot eleven, former may at a gravel pit. Subdivision application for thirty residential homes. McSorley.
Good evening, board, Rob McSorley with Sebagro Technics, representing the applicant, the Farmhouse LLC. Uh, we, you'll see on the plans, um, this was originally called the Richfield Road subdivision, we've come up with a name now that. Uh, we're gonna use Woodland Heights, so that's what's on your plans in front of you. Uh, we're proposing a subdivision within the rural residential zone. We have a site that's about ninety-six acres, um, and, uh, in this zone, uh, we have a density requirement for maximum density requirement of three acres. Per lot or unit that we propose to meet or instruct. Just to remind you, uh, we had a sketch plan with you back in October, October twenty-first. And then there was a site walk out at the gravel pit on November eighth, where you got to see the site in person. Uh, we're proposing a conservation subdivision. You can see on the plan that's on the screen or over there, um, approximately sixty percent of the site will be, uh. In open space, which has been, um, basically positioned around the entire development plot, so you have a contiguous, uh, conservation area. Uh, included in that, uh, there is a wetland to the, uh. Uh, there is a wetland to the, uh, eastern, northeastern side there that we've held back, uh, the development from, uh, a fair amount. Based upon the layout we have, we have some significant buffering from all the property lines. Um, so we don't have any of the development occurring, uh, who are very close to any adjacent butters. Um, a part of the project, uh, during the, I believe, um, this early discussions was to have a pedestrian trail system through the development and you'll see, uh, we have numerous trails and there'll be a, uh, picnic type area over, uh, towards this southern corner there, there'll be some picnic tables or whatnot as part of that. This project, uh, of course is outside of the area where any, uh, utility facilities are, so, um, the entire subdivision will be served by, uh, wells and septic. Part of what we are proposing, of course, we don't have an existing pond on site, so we have a fire cistern that we're proposing. Great, as you come in the entrance off from, uh, Richville Road, there will be a fire cistern for the, the development. Also, uh, at that location could be used for, uh, any adjacent properties as well. Um, for stormwater for the site, we need to meet a DEP criteria, uh, both for, um, water quality, phosphorus and detention purposes. As part of that, we're proposing a wet pond. All of, or the majority of the development that's happening within the parcel is in the area already impacted by the gravel pit oper- operations. We have just a very small amount, uh, up in the northern corner where we will be constructing an outfall pipe and a rip rap outfall. Traffic will not generate, uh, very many trips as it's only thirty houses. Uh, typically, uh, ten trips per house per day is the standard that they consider. Less than ten percent of that is typically what your peak, uh, hour is, um, relative to site distance. Uh, we have adequate site distance has been looked at by our transportation engineers and we have approximately a thousand feet in, in both directions. We've gotten comments both from peer review and from staff and we have gone through those and nothing really, um, is a major issue that we feel. Um, there is a question about phasing, if you want to talk about that, I do have a phasing map that I could show you after I get done my, my comments here. The peer review comments were pretty straightforward, we will deal with Goral Palmer relative to resolving those. And on the next, we hope to have a cost estimate and HOA documents and, um, clean up everything, uh, relative to what we need for the project. We do have, uh, other permits that are necessary from the, um, main department of transportation for a driveway permit. And of course, uh, we, um, will have a site location development act permit that we will need from DEP. Uh, with that, I'm gonna go turn my map around. Hopefully you can see it all there, uh, tried to make some bright colors. Um, based upon the restriction on the amount of lots that we can build on a yearly basis, we basically have divided it up into six, uh, parts of the project to, to construct. The first phase would be, of course, the entry, the fire cistern and the, uh, first five lots that we are allowed to build. And of course, we will build the stormwater pond and the outfall and stabilize all that. We would also build some temporary stabilized ditch through what we have the green phase two and the blue phase three that would get over to our stormwater. And then we would just kind of progress around in a clockwise direction. The way we've cut this is basically you're having all the high, you're going from the high to the low and then coming back up to the high point on the far side of the, uh, development. Um, with that, I think the project's pretty straightforward and you willing to entertain any questions that you have on the front?
Uh, anything? Before we get into anything else, I think the board, I should have done this before we even started, but the board needs to address a conflict of interest issue. Um, one of the board members has directed the
I'm what?
Properties.
I'm not a butter.
Your
My mother's a
are butters and have an easement on this property and that's a direct financial interest in this property.
Well, the, the board can vote, I certainly can sit over there and talk just as well as on this side. I don't know if that's, why would my parents have anything to do with what, um, what, what I'm on this board for?
A family connection to someone who has an interest in the property and they have easement on this property, so I would say a direct conflict of interest.
Well, they can vote me off, that's fine.
Fine, but the attorney sent us. You want me to read it? I have the stuff here from the attorney.
Sir, Mr. Chair, read it.
I'm gonna read the whole thing, but. As a general rule, a conflict of interest occurs when a municipal official has a direct personal or uh, pecuniary, pecuniary financial interest in the outcome of a matter of official business. In Maine, there is both statutory and case law test for conflicts of interest under the statutory test thirty AMRS subsection two six oh five four. No municipal official may vote on a matter where he owns or controls ten percent or more of the business that is before the body on which the official sits or where the official is an officer, director, partner, employee or stockholder of a business that is before the body. Under the case law test, a specific question is whether by reason of the board's members' interest, the member is placed in a situation of temptation to serve his own personal interest to the prejudice of the interests of those for whom the law are authorized and required him to act. As a town official, this is under Tescan versus Smith, board members are to be guided by the rule in Maine that public officials should have a perfect ability to their public position and anything that appears to compromise that must be carefully considered necessary. Necessarily each possible conflict of interest issue is a fact specific. That's what they sent.
I'd also say the, uh, the bylaws for the planning board under section five conflict of interest state that, as Deb stated, it should be done by a vote of the board if, and that it should under, uh, subsection D. disqualified from voting, a particular matter should be made by majority, majority vote of the remaining members present for the board to decide that pecuniary interest exists, significant impact on the board member, his or her family, employee and their employer may exist. So, family is clearly a thing in the planning board bylaws that is considered a potential complicating factor to being able to be non-biased on an attribution.
So, do we need a motion?
Yes. Sorry. Need a motion and a second.
And how does that motion need to be crafted? Any special way?
Fine that a conflict of interest exists.
We come up with a
Sorry, Carolyn, in a sense, you know, didn't, took it, took her, took herself out in one, one second.
That was a direct a butter.
Right, yeah, so the case is that we didn't have to deal with this in the, on the previous issue. This is more of a that way we'll just have to say, oh, sorry, in a sense, I make a motion that we, uh, in a sense, consider Deb Boxer due to a family relationship um, has a conflict of interest and should recuse herself. It's not supported, then it's not supported, but at least we have a motion and if we don't have a second, then it's life.
I'll second that for discussion.
Patrick?
You know, if, um, if she remains on the board, would it kind of open up whatever we determine to, like legal consequence?
Yeah.
I guess what, what's?
Any thoughts, Carol?
I don't think it's immediate family. Immediate family, I would think, might be a conflict of interest. Otherwise, I'm not sure, I would look to Deb and if Deb thinks she can be impartial and, and go through it, then I would support that.
I will note that elsewhere in that same section, immediate family is defined as including spouse, parents, siblings and grandchildren.
Yeah, sorry, for Carolyn and I, when we served on the school board, immediate family was a sticking point when it came to certain things, when it came to, you know, certain officers. As I said, I just think we should vote it and let the vote stand one way or the other.
The motion is? I've forgotten it.
I make a motion that in a sense, due to the fam- familial interest in, you know, Deb Boxer be refused for this, for this matter, this matter only.
My second stands.
Will there be public comment on this?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're way early in this.
Yeah.
Not typically, this is a staff function, this doesn't usually have any public interest input. At least I've never seen any.
Right.
Any other board members recall, I don't recall anybody just being open.
Administrative matter of the board, it's not an application in front of the board.
We have a motion, been seconded. Any further discussion by board members? Seeing none, all those in favor? Or opposed? I guess you get to be vocal in the audience step. Okay, moving on, Scott, would you like to add anything?
I think they covered it pretty thoroughly, um, we are, I think. There's still a few questions to be answered, mostly in the engineering review before we really can move forward on this, but otherwise, I think they are. And there's a few questions that I'm, I think the board has to feel where they land on just how much justification is put into the reasons behind the conservation subdivision and the layout of the open space. I think a lot of the information may be there, but it's not summed up nicely for the board like it may the ordinance expects it to be, so I think the board should, uh, give the applicants some direction on what you'd like to see on those fronts.
We're required to have connectivity between this lot and others.
They only explicitly require connectivity in the Hornbys Cone district. The rest of the districts, so, no, we don't, and I think that, and the conservation subdivisions in particular depend a lot of leeway on the board to determine what is appropriate there. And given some of the requirements like wildlife corridors and things like that, it at times can be counterproductive, so.
I achieve?
This has been submitted
Looked at, that's quite a distance, just been in the last two lots.
I am hoping to get, uh, formal comment from the public safety department on the cistern in particular, but in general, um, I don't have that at this time.
I assume we're gonna need a test pit with that cistern in, so make, make sure it doesn't blow out of the ground when they pump it out.
I assume so.
As I looked at the soils reports, I noticed that we have groundwater and or a restrictive layer in a lot of places that are less than two feet. We have got at least one other subdivision town, maybe others, that we've got an issue with water in the basements. I'm wondering if we need to address some grading in those areas to ensure that the finished floor of the basement is at or above that magical number, uh, whatever it is. We don't have the neighbors coming back in in the future. Leave that open to the board to think about and talk, that was one thing I noted. I, there are areas on there where there's no issues at all, it's four, four plus feet of good soil. Our re- review engineer has asked for some, uh, grading for driveways on some of those lots, so maybe, and I know other projects we've asked for grading on the individual lots so that we can see how they're gonna fit in there and we may want to consider that on some of those lots, but we don't have a lot of cover over the, either the restrictive layer or the
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
I wanna
When we did the sidewalk in November, one of the concerns, if you remember, um, was that was the wetlands where the construction, I'm sorry, where, when we did the sidewalk, because that was a formal, I hate to say, it was formal ice skating rink almost. I think I was a comment, I think I made to Andrew and several others, I was impressed that the pit had been backfilled because it used to be very deep. Um, so my concern, yeah, when looking at exhibit six with a stormwater runoff was exactly how some of the later, sorry, the orange and pink sections as you get towards that wetlands or that side, which was always used to be lower where the water runoff was. Initial concerns actually relate to the first phase and, um, on C one oh one, the, the map which has the elevations, when we were doing the sidewalk, alright, lot twenty nineteen, the, the first couple phases, that's where that steep hill is, sorry, C one oh one has the elevation map. That those, in a sense, the first phase where the like, you know, since lot two nineteen, twenty's fine, but that's up on a hill. I noticed with the elevation, there was like a fifteen or twenty foot drop in the elevation on C one oh one. When we were doing the sidewalk, that was the big thing, when we were looking that way, um, cause we, the roads over here on this side, we were looking that way. That's a, that's a pretty steep elevational drop for those lots.
Yep.
For the stormwater, yes, I can understand, you know, Mr. Chair about, you know, in, in exhibit six, but I was very interested in the fact of how the mitigation is and that those raise one lots were gonna be, that's a, that's the, that's that steep hill that we were all looking at, I remember that day.
Those areas up in that area predominantly are good soils.
Yeah. Four feet. So I'm not, was worried about warm storm runoff there, but it is a steep elevation on those two lots, um, but the fact is that, uh, as I said, my concerns are more in exhibit sis when six and the
My ring span is greater than five feet, so I think five feet might be a little small.
I don't think you're gonna see a lot of traffic there.
I'm thinking over time, it's gonna, the, things are gonna grow in, and you're actually gonna get a lot of overhang in five feet. Pretty, pretty tight.
Two things, we want it to grow back in, and another thing is the HOA, it's part of their HO document, we'll have to have a section relative to the maintenance of open space in the trails. It's a real important item for the board.
No, eight foot clearing on actually eight foot impervious surface, a walk-on.
It says five foot wide gravel, I would like eight foot wide gravel.
We can clear it to eight feet, that's, and keep it clear for that.
Well, I mean, yeah, you could do a five foot wide and then do grass on either side, but then you did gotta take care of the grass, so. Up to you.
Whatever naturally occurs, we're not gonna put grass in there, because it's gonna be conservation area. We'll use a conservation grass mix and they'll go through in one year, twice a year.
Areas could be just chipped, right?
Yeah. Not a big deal. What do we need to do?
I notice somewhere in here that this was not in the watershed, this Sabego Lake. I think the ditch is going into the watershed.
It is, we've done phosphorus for it. If, if there was a statement to that effect, I missed it.
It not have been in your data.
Oh, yeah, that's my fault, I'm sorry.
It was in your data?
Yeah, no, it absolutely does, it's my fault.
The discharge goes out, goes out, shot distance through... It is now lot 16.
Wetland complex that comes in off the lake there, there's actually an IWWH bird habitat there, and we're back, our property line's over 250 feet from that. So, we'll be dis- and that's a natural discharge down through that area.
Not changing where the water's always gone, it's just...
Correct.
Treating it before it gets there.
Yep.
Anybody else? I've been yammering here. We should, we wish it open to the public?
No, I'd like to just say something first. I would like to see some street trees. When we went through there, it was pretty wide open. You know, and I know that it would be nice to have some kind of...
They're, they're gonna do a landscape package on each lot, and they'll end up putting trees on each lot along the frontage and whatnot. Better than having in the street because of all the stuff that has to go in there and whatnot. For maintenance purposes, that it's not in, we can propose to have two trees along the frontage of every lot.
Right.
They'll be ready at the homeowners association.
A requirement that they have, they have two trees and they have to maintain.
Trees, no wild trees.
That's it.
Native trees.
No palm trees?
No palm trees.
No palm trees.
No southern palm, no of that.
So, it also sounded like, if I'm reading this correctly, that there's the road, there's sidewalk, and then a little divot?
Yeah, that's the swale.
The swale, so, and the swale is going to be that fabric, is that what I read?
Yeah, they will stabilize it with an erosion control fabric.
Right, not the riprap fabric.
There are along the swale, we do have some riprap check dams as part of slowing velocity down along the thing. It's not intended to be totally riprap, but I think...
I was trying to see where the riprap would be, but I couldn't, I could not detect that.
If you look on...
Probably the steeper slopes. It's on the steeper.
Well, we, we have put them on all, all the slopes, and it, the distance varies based upon the slope of the road, because what you do is you put a section of riprap here. Base of it is the same as the top of it downstream. You kind of hold that water, and then it filters through the riprap, and that keeps the velocity down along the length of it. That's, if you look at the DEP manual, that's part of the recommended thing for swales.
So, like, the slope is three to one, which isn't really all that steep, right, for most of the...
Yeah, we're not, riprapping go this way, we're gonna, I think, along it. So, here we'll have a little check dam, 200 feet down, will be another section of riprap.
Okay, yeah.
With the section of down near where the pond is, where you have pipes, where there's gonna be dry waste for the houses, they'll put riprap on either end of that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pipe inlets. At the pipe inlets and outlets. They're gonna riprap at the pipe inlet.
Oh, yes, yep, yep. The one thing we did do is I had them riprat down along that one section to our fordbag in the pond. Along the roadway, there'll just be check dams and, and rate at the culverts to the roadways.
You find some of them, Carolyn?
No, I didn't, I didn't find that, so, well, right now I just have 101, just looking at the whole thing.
102, they show up. You find station 1, 103 plus zero zero?
Yeah.
One of these little bit, they're the full little round circles.
Oh, okay. Okay, great.
Another one down the road.
Yeah.
Deeper, so they're all closer together, and then as it gets shallow, less grade, they're further apart.
Thank you. You were pointing that out.
Open it up to the public. Their thoughts?
Make a motion to open, open it up to the public if there's no other board comments.
Make room for discussion by the board? All those in favor? Names open to the public. People would just come to the podium and give us your name and address or whatever.
Ywata, 918 Richfield Road, Sandish. I just had a question regarding the recusing yourself, Scott, maybe you would be the best to answer this. But I believe, and I've noticed this, several plans from Sabego Technics come through, but I believe a few of you on the planning board both work for Sabego Technics. Is that not a conflict of interest?
You currently work for Sabego Technics.
Not even independent contractors? Thank you.
Sir Cole Hill Road, I'm wondering about what, how a 30 house subdivision fits into a low growth area. This is low growth area one. I've noticed that some, you had put into the package that it was transitional growth, it's not. It's low growth area one.
It's low growth, yeah.
How does that fit into a 30 lot subdivision?
It's the net residential calculation, right?
I mean...
Three acres per lot?
Three acres per lot is our zoning, it's subject to a maximum of five growth permits issued a year under our growth management ordinance. The ordinance allowance for growth.
And what about what's gonna be done as far as testing for all the lead in the back of the property? And all of the oil spills and gasoline and all this trout stuff that went on with the sand pit for whatever, 12, 15, 20 years? How does that work? Or is there no testing and you're just...
When we were at the site block, we talked with the owners, and they have monitoring wells, and I thought they were gonna get some base data of what the water quality was in those wells. Did I misunderstand them?
I mean, I think the board has the ability to make sure that there is adequate water provisions for this site, and that includes safe water. If there is concerns of gas pollution, then we'll get some water testing done.
Well, soil, soil testing too. I mean, it's the soil where the gas and whatever is leaked into. And then there's, what about the building debris that's out back and those, I mean, you've, you've got these hills, it's, it's a pit, and if you brought it up on there, you could see it, but it's just a, it's just a sand pit with big tall sides. And in the back, the, where they, they buried the construction debris from another thing, I wouldn't, how does that... I mean, is it just gonna stay there or does it get removed or how does that work? And then what about, there's a stream that runs from the bottom, there's a stream that runs off our property right here, down here. That I didn't hear anything about. And, um, as far as the wetlands, you can't, you can't, um, I thought it was done in like September and you have to check for vernal pools and whatever else, um, in the spring during, I think it's April, March, March through April and something like that. Check for, um, vernal pool stuff. And, uh, I guess that was it. I don't really understand the trail, there's no tra- it's just an open bunch of dirt and sand. I don't know how you, why this trail thing is in here, it doesn't make any sense.
You said there's debris on site?
Out back. In the, in the, in the, in the hill out back.
Yeah, when I ran out there on the sidewalk, it, there was, there was a lot of trash back there.
Well, and I believe that, I believe construction debris was buried by Mieta out there from a Bradley's, when they tore Bradley's down in Westbrook, rest, Westbrook. Supposedly there's debris out back there.
Do you think there are vernal pools on the site where it's been a pit?
Uh, up top, right, where, where it runs off of our property down into the, where I showed you over there, the, there, that's a vernal pool.
Oh, on that side.
And then, um, where it runs into is, I'm not sure if that's a vernal pool or not in that area. But, um, I know that it's wet all year, uh, cause it, it drains from our side down into that, straight down into the pit. And there's a big gigantic huge thing of, um, Japanese knotwood on both sides, the bottom and the top up there. And that will just spread into people's houses, into their yards or whatever, so that probably should get removed, I don't know. Anyway, that's my.
I just have a concern, I know that you.
State your name, sorry.
Patricia Murray, Poromari Drive in Standish. Um, that there's a body of water, which I believe used to be called the Hayden Bog. And I don't know how close this is to that, but I'm, I, I have a neighbor, Jack Jackson, on Chapman Way who abuts and that bog, and I'm wondering what kind of an impact this is going to have on that bog that actually drains into Sebagel Lake. Question, that's all.
Michelle Rowe, Cole Hill Road, uh, question and a comment. I would just wanna make a comment on the debris also, I'm concerned with that, with my water supply being so close. So that is a big concern for me with all the items that have been buried there. And question, have you done, like, any impact to the school system? Thirty houses, family of two, it's another whole grade. Have we looked at schools and how the impact is at, at schools? Is it?
Yeah, that's a good question. We don't typically have any impact on the ability to school district, but to my understanding, as of the last year, the enrollment's been going down the last few years.
Mike Tatro, Cole Hill Circle, a couple of concerns I have, thirty homes, that's a lot of homes, that's a lot of leach fields. You already talked about the water table being high, that's gonna leach into that, where's that gonna go? There is a, a brook behind that gravel pit, I've been in there many times, I've been in that woods a lot. It does go down to the bog, it's actually a beaver bog, it's right into Sebagel Lake.
It's off that top right end.
Right, and it goes down at a steep level to the bottom. I've seen beaver cuttings and all their dams and their houses and such, I'm kinda worried about that. Not only that, that's thirty wells. What's gonna happen to the aquifers that my wells in or our neighbors' wells? Am I gonna, am I gonna run out of water? Is it gonna take all that water that I have? That's a big concern to me right there. I think thirty is a lot for that area, especially close together, no trees, it's wide open. My concerns are water quality and, you know, Sebagel Lake. Thank you.
Anthony Folsom, Standish resident, uh, my concern, I haven't heard anything about parking tonight. How many parking spots are gonna be in each house? And I know it's no on-street parking anymore in the town, so if it's only two, two cars per parking lot or driveway, where are the cars gonna be parked if anybody has, anybody come over? I don't see any additional side parking, any group parking or where someone could put any cars. And is the cars gonna be making issue further down the road for either the town or anybody, but there's no on-street parking. So I think the parking should be addressed.
Anyone else like to speak?
I have a lot, so. Oh, good evening, everybody. Brandon Watson, uh, Richfield Road, Standish. Uh, I wanna kinda make a clarifications too, this is rural zone, not rural residential, that was mentioned. Uh, but thank you all for being here tonight, I know this is a lot of work for you guys. But I stand before you, not as the council chair, but as a citizen of Standish, a neighbor, and somebody wants to protect the rural character of Standish. Uh, we right now are at a pivotal moment and a crossroads between development and preservation. Today I wanna urgently address you, uh, the need for you guys to protect our rural lands from overdevelopment and unnecessary subdivisions. Not just for us, but for our future generations. Standish is a place of beauty, peace and quiet, made up by three distinct villages making one community, as we all know. Where nature and human, uh, coexist and harmony. We have the beautiful forest, we have some farmlands, we have two sparkling lakes, some ponds and open spaces that define the feel of what most of us, uh, love about our town. This land is not just a backdrop to our lives, but the heartbeat of who we are. The fields of forest and hills provide sanctuary for wildlife and a refuge for clean air and clean water. The sense of serenity that can only be found in rural areas. Unfortunately, the way of, this way of life is at risk due to the pressure of overdevelopment and the trend of sub- subdividing our precious land. But why does it matter? And why should we be concerned about the subdivision and excessive development? First, as an avid hunter and fisherman-outdoorsman, rural land is where we can hunt, trap and experience the outdoors, uh, with ourselves and our families. Hunting is a historical tradition and part of the rural area of towns that we, in the areas of town that we can do it in are quickly disappearing. Rural lands are vital for maintaining the health of our ecosystem, the forests, wetlands and farmland provide critical services. They filter our water, clean our air and reduce the risk of flooding and provide habitat for our wildlife. Once we carve up all these areas into subdivisions, we're losing much more than open space. We're losing ecological balance that has been sustaining us for generations. If we allow growth to go unchecked and destroy these resources, we are jeopardizing our ability to enjoy clean water, fertile soil and fresh air. We're leaving our town more vulnerable to climate change with less natural land to absorb rainfall and reduce flooding. Secondly, overdevelopment and subdivisions impacted natural character of Standish. As more and more land is divided into smaller lots and developed into sprawling neighborhoods, we risk losing the variety, the very identity that makes Standish special. The charm of Standish lies in wide open spaces, scenic views and the community that is all concerned to, connected to nature. We're already seeing the signs of this change with more housing popping up, former farmlands and forests being replaced by concrete and homes. But once these changes happen, they can't be undone or taken back. The rural way of life we cherish will be lost and in this place will be suburban sprawl that alters the very essence of what makes Standish special, uh, special and unique. Finally, overdevelopment often leads to the loss of affordability, the strain of additional infrastructure and more divisions means more roads, more utilities, more traffic, more pressure to expand our schools, emergency services and public facilities. If uncontrolled, this growth leads to higher taxes and strain on the local resources. While new developments may seem like the way to bring in more revenue, often place a more burden on local government and residents, which far outweighs the benefits. Not to mention, in November, December, January and February, Standish and most of Maine is in a buyer's market, meaning there's a surplus of homes available and that outnumber the amount of people looking to buy their homes, those homes. With hundreds of already approved permits in other developments, why do we need more housing? Isn't really one, only to drive up the costs for existing taxpayers. What can we do to stop it from happening? First, we need to strengthen our local zoning laws, which will start, um, local zones laws. We need to ensure that development is balanced and thoughtful, guiding growth in ways that protect our natural resources and open spaces by creating zoning regulations that preserve large tracts of land and encourage responsible development. So we can slow the march of sprawl while allowing for sensible growth. Secondly, we need to champion land conservation efforts, land trusts, conservation easements and agreements where local farmers can help protect this, this swaths of rural land from subdivisions. Uh, we, we're actually interested in having that land for our Christmas tree farm. Uh, if we work together as a community to create these protections, we can safeguard our open spaces from pressure and development, encouraging landowners to voluntarily preserving their land for future generations. Thirdly, we must stay informed and involved. Appreciate everybody here that's been involved with the meeting. These decisions will shape Standers', uh, Standish's future. Our now in-town meetings and planning sessions, we must make our voices heard and let our local officials know the value of our rural land and we want it to be protected. This means coming out and attending these meetings, writing letters and being, uh, actively participating in the conversation. We can influence these decisions by standing up for our community residents who voted you in and stopped this growth. Our decision today will determine whether our children or grandchildren will be able to experience the same beauty in the place that we enjoy today. In conclusion, protecting our rural lands from overdevelopment, overdevelopment and subdividing is not just about preserving open space, it's protecting your, about protecting our community, environment and way of life and our residents' tax dollars. Standish has always been a place of tranquility, beauty and connection to nature and we must act now to ensure it remains that way for generations to come. Let's stand together as neighbors and stewards of this land and take the necessary steps to protect what makes Standish unique. We all have a role to play in this collective effort and we owe it to ourselves and our children and future generations of Standish to ensure that our rural lands are preserved and not subdivided. Uh, so, thank you and I just hope you. Take heed.
Heidi Watson, nine eighteen Richfield Road, I do not have nearly as much to say as my husband does. Um, I wanna take just a quick moment, tell everybody at home and everybody here, on March twenty-second is the next comprehensive plan committee meeting from ten o'clock to one o'clock, it's a public forum. And we invite, we, everybody, if you can make it, to try and come there, it's the planning of the future of the town of Standish, so it's important for us to, to do that. I like, I, I just, my one concern was the road, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to hear that the fire department approves that there's one entrance in and one exit, but that is, um, you know, thirty houses is a lot for a fire department if there is an emergency to get in there, if there, you know, we've had accidents happen right in front of our house and that have blocked the roadway completely. Um, there have been terrible accidents just down the road, um, at, at other locations and fire department couldn't get into one entrance places. And unfortunately, um, lives of children were lost, so I would like to, if there's any possibility of there being another way or I don't know what the code is for the, the widths of those, and then also somebody already, also already mentioned parking. But is there parking in, on these lots, individual lots, um, or is it on the street? I think that's all that I have to say. Thank, and again, thank you all, Andrew, Charlie, Patrick, Todd and Carolyn and Deb and Frank for all doing what you do and Jackie and Scott, thank you as well. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? We will have, open to the public, probably at our next meeting as well. You will have another opportunity to speak if you like to in the future. I don't know if you wanna respond to any of that now?
Mr. McSorley, yeah. Just see if I can help with, uh, questions and whatnot came up. Uh, certainly it's a low growth area, uh, only five building permits a year. And the, the basic density that's allowed on this property is based upon your land code, your comprehensive plan. And that's why it's three, uh, acres per unit. Um, relative to the project, uh, we've gone to a conservation subdivision so that we have a great expanse of the property, sixty percent of it, which will be left in open space. And the great thing is, it's gonna be connected to that open space or the, um, area towards the lake and, uh, the bog that was mentioned. That bog exists off the property, it's a, uh, inland bird habitat, which has a two hundred and fifty foot buffer for protecting it. And, and we're out of that, that's one of the things that, uh, we have dealt with IFW on. Um, relative to vernal pools, we have looked at the site for the potential of vernal pools and we will be out there this year, specifically during the vernal pool season. The only area that we see is a potential vernal pool is the wetland that we have indicated on the plan. And the way the site has been laid out is such that if it were a significant vernal pool, then we would not be in act, impacting more than twenty-five percent within what's called the critical terrestrial habitat. And that's what you're allowed to impact and getting perma by rule from, uh, the DEP. Uh, relative to, uh, uh, any other vernal pools, there are no significant vernal pools that are noted within this area and IFW has confirmed that. We got a letter back from them that there are no, uh, significant vernal pools listed within the area. Relative to streams, uh, there is a stream that's off the property, I guess to the, uh, north easterly side. That's not on our property. There is a blue line, if you look at the, um, town's website, that seems to indicate one along the property line in the property. However, there are no streams on the property. And one of the things that we cannot do as a developer, we can't go into somebody else's property and survey their property and impact their property, uh, relative to marking out wetlands or any other, uh, features that would restrict their property. Impact on bog. Uh, the debris, um, we will be cleaning the site up as we go along. As I mentioned, there's a, a great deal of boulders there that we're going to crush and use for this property. If the, there is construction debris that's encountered, that's gonna be taken off the site. You know, they're not going to, you know, build over that, that's a potential for a, a lawsuit if you're building a house on top of, you know, refuge, so, um, if it's encountered, that will be taken care of. Um, relative to wells and septic tanks for the property, there's a reason why you have a three acre minimum per lot, especially in this zone, is so that you do have the separation between the wells and, uh, or the number of wells that you're going to have within a rural area. And relative to where the septic will, will, um, um, go in the subsurface. Typically, when you're as a board, you wanna make sure that nothing goes over the property line. Uh, that's a typical standard, uh, when you look at nitrate studies and whatnot. The topography of this is such that none of it will go towards the property line. It will be dissipated into, uh, the lot in the site and meandered through the subsurface condition. Parking spaces, uh, I haven't seen the units that are proposed for this, but I assume there'll be two car garages with a driveway that will allow to have two cars in, in the driveway too. Will there be people parking? Will there be people parking on the street? They usually might, but the intent is to have two parking spaces and a garage and two in front of the house. I don't know if there's any others that I missed, but, uh, oh, uh, relative to concerns, whether to groundwater, uh, and contamination, uh, he knows that this is a former gravel pit, and they will be looking at that, uh, as this project goes forward, and they will look at those issues. Uh, I know that, uh, just around the corner from my house, there's a lovely subdivision going on right now in, in a former gravel pit area. Relative to preservation, this is a gravel pit. It's been impacted. What we're doing is we're putting a development in an impacted area, and we're gonna preserve quite a bit of the property. Once again, sixty percent of it will be in open space that will connect into wild ass areas that connect to the lake. So, you know, it's, it's, that's why you look at a conservation subdivision. So we think it's a good project, and we, uh, look to move forward with you all. Thank you.
Do you know anything about getting some water samples to have a baseline data of what's out there today? You can check with the applicant.
We, we, we'll have a discussion on that.
I think they agreed to do that at the sidewalk.
Okay, uh, if that was agreed to, then.
Yeah, sorry, he, I did, it did bring, that was one when I saw the fact the soils reported at least two soil test pits for each proposed lot. I, I, I saw in one fourteen to one fifty-two of the packet, it does have the general source report, but I'd be interested in seeing some of the groundwater and, um, other tests. He did have, they did have wells, although they're not.
Yeah, there is a monitoring well. I know at least one on site.
Yeah.
We'll get that down and, and take a look at it.
That should show if there's lead contaminants or if it's oil in the water or whatever.
We can look. Certainly.
I had one, sorry, I didn't know, I think Mrs. Beagle might have had something else. But, um, the crosswalk, sorry, I remember from Goreland Palmer. I didn't have, bring it up when I was talking about the sidewalk, but it says, "We recommend providing a crosswalk and pedestrian crossing signs where the gravel pathway crosses the Lullians Way near Station One-O-Two." This is from the Goreland Palmer, um, sent out on February twenty-fourth. I don't remember.
Assistant.
Yeah, I didn't remember seeing that in, uh, that, in the.
We didn't see anything in the comments that was overly concerning. The resident for subdivision, we put the gravel crosswalks, you know, where there are major intersections. We'll look at that area as part of the comments.
We have to work on the, uh, turning radiuses too for the fire truck to get into that.
And we can make bigger radiuses off the runway, so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, as I said, I asked Mr. Hastings about the fire prevention, 'cause I didn't see, when I, when we got the PDF of the plans, I didn't see as much detail as I was hoping for as far as, and then hoping for a comment from the, you know, our fire department as far as.
We can do a routing of the, uh, fire truck that, uh, Standish uses and make sure that we have enough, uh, turns and whatnot on the, uh, access for the fire system.
On numerous other projects, we've asked them to do individual potential site plans. Showed a, a hundred thirty by forty, thirty by fifty, whatever box where the house would go and some general, you know, grading. And we wanna ask for that in these area, these lots where it's so close to the water table, so we can see how that would be graded out. We can actually do it right on these sheets, there's enough room.
One of the things we were specific about there is to make sure that, uh, all the lots are graded so that we have positive drainage around to the swell. But, uh, we can do a standard, more specific standard detail or pick one or two of the lots and do that.
Any thoughts from your perspective, Scott, as to how we approach that? We've had recent, a lot of people coming in talking about wet basements and stuff, and I just, if we can do anything to avoid that, I think we're way ahead of the game.
And I agree, and I think it's, it's on the applicant to give you some information that helps you feel better about that, and then you can go from there, um, if you think that. Some more detailed grading plans of those low lots with the need. They think they can provide you some other information to help you be more comfortable with the drainage there, then I don't, I don't know if you need a formal motion on that or anything.
No, this was just to give them some thoughts as to how we might approach it. Basically, those areas inside the.
We did require just a couple lots that have a building envelope, right? The lots we were concerned about before would be nice.
Yes, we did, that whole lower section.
Right.
Yeah, they did. Because we're looking at lots, I think it's seven through eleven, and one of the other ones, twenty, probably something like that. These are high water tables, at the most of the surface, or there's close to a, uh, assuming that it's a till or a hod pan. It's a restrictive layer anyways.
Yeah.
The water's gonna run right along that.
And we can definitely.
Take a look at that anyways. They have enough ditch out front to get a positive drain into it, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just one other thing that Goreland Palmer suggested was that all existing debris, solid waste from the previous use shall be removed, making this a condition of approval, right, through issuing a warrant of any certificate of occupancy. I mean, he talked about doing that, but it, you know, they're just kind of right. Putting that in there.
We can put a note, uh, I know the general notes on the plans that, uh, you're responsible for doing that. Put it as a commission.
Then the, the other thing we talked about while we were at the sidewalk, there's that gravel road that still exists to go into the pit.
Which will be discontinued, yeah.
Even if it's discontinued, will it be, um, available if an emergency vehicle needed to access that?
It's not intended, uh, that would impact the lots over on that side. You know, I, I don't see a lot of concern relative to thirty houses in access. I live in a subdivision, and I live on a dead-end portion of it, and, uh, we see the fire trucks on a regular basis 'cause they come and fill our fire systems. So, um, I think it'd be, you know, just more disruptive to the site. And also, w- we're talking about, you know, why are we building more houses? Well, uh, we do have a problem with housing. It's, it's evident in the state. Putting another long-access road in there is going to substantially increase the cost of these houses for no real benefit, so.
I'd also just note that the dead-end, the recommended dead-end maximum length is the same as the fire hose length. So we're, which we said we're reasonably within. So I mean, I believe, uh, again, I haven't tried to measure it out on paper. I believe we're in there, but I haven't done all the turn radiuses and stuff. But I believe we are within what the ordinance is allowance for a dead-end road in terms of length.
Once again, this is really not a true dead end with the, the arrangement on. I know that they, they don't wanna be driving three miles back and then have a loop, uh, but, uh.
Yes, three times thirty is ninety. Gee, uh, sorry, since you, ma'am, if you could come up to the microphone.
If each lot is thirty-three acres and there's thirty lots, that's ninety acres, right? There is the extra, that's almost the whole lot, isn't it?
It's a cluster subdivision. I mean, the conservation subdivision allows for smaller lots, and the open space is the balance. The total acreage is, I think it's around ninety-eight acres for this site, and that supports a net residential acreage of those thirty houses.
Oh, so these are like.
Are on about, I think they're mostly about an acre.
Oh, okay.
So each lot will own roughly two acres, common ownership in the open space. At this point, I, I don't know if we even have every, do we have all the data in-house? We don't have all the data in-house yet. They've submitted.
Sorry, Mr..
I think the board has been wanting to have a pretty good answer on all the engineering comments before they grant preliminary approval, so we're still waiting on response to those and the back and forth there. And I think we, based on what we've heard here tonight, um, both from the board and from the public, then I, I think we want more specific response from public safety. So I think we're gonna, we're gonna want that before we give preliminary. Yeah, there's a few other things the board's brought up here tonight.
Month? Two months?
Sounds good.
You know, which would you prefer? Can we table it for a month?
Yeah, table it for a month. Uh, you consider the application complete, but we still need to address issues relative to comments before you grant preliminary approval, correct?
Right, I think we could have a motion to find the applications submitted by SAVA Technics on behalf of Farmhouse LLC for subdivision property map sixteen-eleven to be complete for preliminary review as presented. Could make that. I don't think we should conclude the final, 'cause there's other material coming in. And so I just rattle that off, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
That is, move to find the applications submitted by Tavago Technics on behalf of Farmhouse LLC for subdivision of the property, map sixteen, lot eleven, to be complete for preliminary review as presented. It's a modification from what was. Is there a second, a pause?
I'll second it.
Question?
Question? Do we need any financial capacity for completeness?
That will be submitted with final, right?
I think a reason is preliminary, doesn't it?
I think it's.
We're working, before we've given preliminary approval, we need it.
Right.
I'm not here to do that tonight, do you?
No.
Nope.
That's point number ten, sorry, memo was point number ten.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
Right, is there a motion to table this? Get these items addressed.
I make a motion to table it.
Second that. Second to table this.
Let me go to the issues. Clear on timeline, are you leaving this open to when they're ready to submit for their?
When they're ready to submit all of it out? Or if they get it in in two weeks?
For the public being here, that may not be next month's meeting. It might be if they get their stuff together, but it, it's not a, a date certain. This is when they get back.
I think the cutoff is the seventeenth. Uh, we'll have some idea before that, and we'll let you know. If not, it would be the following.
We expect it either, one of the next two meetings, we expect it.
At least that was my opinion. Is there a discussion? Being none, all those in favor? In unanimous, table. Thank you very much. And I think that concludes our meeting this evening. Thank you for coming, everybody. Like to look at the plans, there are one file here at the town office.